Okay, okay, on behalf of your order, your consideration, excuse me, we're going to run through our July 7th meeting. Hope you're enjoying the July 4th and the state social distancing July 4th. Your consideration for pro will the minutes?
Oh, second.
Josh, any further discussion? Uh, on favor, sing if I was to say aye.
Aye.
Polls, very unanimous, consent titles, things and claims. Nine seconds. Paul, any further discussion?
The bluegrass boots, which show this is that's just for the health insurance.
Right.
Okay.
On favor, sing if I was to say aye.
Aye.
Full period, school's not on the bluegrass. So, uh, great, any further discussion with questions? Uh, on favor, sing if I was to say aye.
Aye.
Polls, very unanimous, new business? Consideration of food purchase of industrial parts for the two parcels by over the bridge north of ICS and south of our well field on way to Catholic seminary.
Where can that, um, come in? She's just running all of that things.
Right.
So she's exactly.
People still, so next we'll go to the B, consideration of food, water, carpet, request, recovery, now, like, Philip and Mike Kirby.
Philip, all right, welcome. In our last meeting, on my word, the three of us came for a request for a hundred dollar raise to retire the company. Which, uh, no raise at all, maybe say they're at twenty seven thousand. Um, that would be twenty seven thousand, two hundred dollars if everybody would retire, that would be left over. With a fifty dollar raise, we'd be sitting at six thousand dollars. And then it'll be the same, if considered, everybody retiring, there'd be six thousand dollars left over. With a hundred dollar raise, it would show that there's a fifteen thousand dollar deficit. That's if everyone retired, you know, immediately, you know, and the thing is, you can only retire if you have ten years or more. So I'd be seventeen people in the department. We have seven with over ten years, six with over twenty, and four people with over thirty years. And you have to have ten years on the fire department to get any retirement.
Ten years, ten years.
Ten years, you'd be sixty percent deficit.
Okay. And that's not fit until you turn fifty, right?
Yeah, correct. It used to be fifty five, we changed to fifty.
What's the, and maybe this is a question for Mike, I don't know, the return, what's the return then for the last couple of months? Maybe, maybe you don't know that.
Oh, yeah, I have it back in your office. Okay, um, for last year, I don't have for the first six months here, but, um, from a total standpoint, we're actually down about thirty seven, thirty eight thousand. Just the first year. Stocks have made a big comeback, we've got a large part of that back, um, but actually the bonds have been the pieces that actually got, you know, worse, but I think long term, they're still paying a bit and not consistent misses, so. I think we'll be, I think we'll be okay long term, short term. Who else?
Everybody.
You're only allowed to invest so much each. We've got our, when we did the, this one after two thousand and four, we did the, uh, breakdown, one third, one third, one third. Right now, we're a little, definitely, definitely waiting towards stocks. I'd say probably by, uh, say forty percent, you know, two or about thirty percent. Uh, just because CDs are, are awful right now. They're gonna be, they're gonna be worse than the fact that, uh, um, general interest rates, but it's better, so thanks for this. You can wipe this out and bank it for a couple of years.
Right. Any council members have any questions? Or what are your wishes?
Some more retirement increase, uh, one hundred dollars.
All right, well, Josh, second by rate, any further discussion? Anything you guys want to add? On favor, sing if I was to say aye.
Aye.
Polls, very unanimous, thank you for your question, or, no, not, not you guys.
Was this fund, was this fund initially started through the work of our apartment itself, or how did, how did we get this retirement fund going? Where did the initial dollars come to establish this retirement fund?
Josh, probably answer the, the, the statement of some that establishes the relief association. And percentage of your property and casualty insurance gets paid to the state two percent servicing that goes into the state.
That fee there didn't come into play until this, not too long ago.
Right.
So those funds had to be, had to come from, but the reason I'm asking is, I'm wondering why there was never a retirement fund set up in the art and industry?
Uh, they probably didn't have the political role that they fire departments have, especially in the metro areas.
But it, it would be something in the future that could be established.
There is a small fund for annual services, but it's, no, significant relation.
I, I just can't believe over the years that the people are connected with it, and I know the fire department people go through a lot of training, but those EMTs go through a whole lot of training, I just can't believe over the years that they haven't got a whole somebody that said, hey, let's get a, let's get a retirement plan going, it's worth something. Okay.
Uh, consideration of program, bring the change, like, this is here in Chad.
Hello, um, little sort of background story on the whole, uh, dock here. Um, two thousand and seventeen, we had to talk to DNR and ask them if there was any programs out there to be able to upgrade the docks before we had put in the budget to reduce the docks. Um, at that point, there was no money available, so we told them just to put our name on the list. Well, they did contact the, um, this is late spring here, um, they do have money in that program. Uh, the docks cost over thirty one thousand, our cost would be ten thousand dollars. Um, this is a twenty year program with them, so it's, it's a, a lot, the lease that we'd be going with, anything that would happen to the docks, they would pay for, some of it, they asked for the city to, um, do the maintenance or do, uh, repairs on it, but they'll pay for the materials. So the boards would go back, say, fifteen years, they would buy all the boards, and then we would have to install them.
Where would this dock be going?
This dock would be going by the campground, um, it'd be right by the campground playground, so.
I'll tell them, tell them back to you.
What I'm trying to do is get some of the kids off of the old land and dock, to fish around that, um, and then just give it another dock for like.
So the east of the current, here is on the dock, east of the.
Yeah, east of the old land and dock.
And the funds would be out of general funds and not campground funds?
I have money, some money in the, um, federal fund.
For the, so he's got the money in the budget for Peter, for Peter.
Oh, he's got already, okay.
Yes.
But wouldn't that be better to come out of the campground fund?
I don't know if we have any enough funds in there for the land.
We spent a lot of money since they had campground funds, about a hundred and sixty seven thousand dollars in there?
So, well, this is where I've been told, or we're going to take it, I guess, so.
We, we take it out. We put, we put the money in the campground fund as far as the, the potential, the side of the line, we try and use much money.
That's what your air market had money for right now.
Correct, correct, for the campground on the other side of the, yes.
Jay, would, would this be similar to what, what DNR put out there?
Exactly the same, yes.
And then are we also planning on putting the third, you're asked?
Yes, um, I have all the materials, um, this last winter, we just did not have the time or the manpower to do it, but hopefully this winter, we'll, it'll get them back together, the last one, so.
So, so we won't see that next year?
And we probably won't see this year until next spring. So, right now, um, I, what I need is approval, um, to go with the DNR on this. So then, this will be sent up to the state, the state will approve it, they'll get something back down here, we'll sign it, and then they'll actually get built, so it'll probably be early spring before we get it.
Does it come in large pieces, and then those pieces are put together when they get here?
Yes.
And the state then does all of that?
They all do a lot of it, yes.
That would be a wooden pier.
A wooden pier, yes. Metal frame or, uh, galvanized steel.
Well, it needs to be taken in, uh, in the winter?
They, they like to see it either taken in or turned. Turned and then anchored down.
So it goes along the shoreline, parallel with the shoreline?
Actually, they just, they'd rather just have, see it turn over the ice, so it's not both to the shoreline.
I see.
Yeah.
Are these, is this thirty one thousand dollars, is that the figures from the DNR? Is that their figures?
Yes, that's what they had given me.
They're well, they're paying forty one thousand, yes.
And for the old docks that we had budgeted for, we spent probably around ten to eleven thousand per dock to redo it, and we still had the old frame, so, I mean, I did a lot of welding on them to rebuild them.
Counsel, wait. Josh, nine, further discussion, questions? You want to add it?
No.
On favor, sing if I was to say aye.
Aye.
Polls, period, this is a little late, but did you review this, Steve? General, particularly live, I would push that. Okay, sorry for that, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I'm going to back up to, uh, pro base, purchase of industrial part, margin. You're, you're ladies.
Do you know the role of the whole guy? Did you guys get the email copy of that? Okay, so what we're wanting to do is, is buy land and bring in about a twelve planes and put them in storage. Um, one of the light equipment in Norman and storage at the end of that property.
Are you looking at some climate control storage?
Yeah. Cause it dips down pretty bolted there when we give a lot of rain, um, making the street there, it creeps up pretty, pretty good on that end. So, I think it'd be nice if, and with indoor storage and stuff.
Would the storage be for your business itself, or then would you also rent some space out? So just your business storage?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, it's all rental, all units, like what's in the deal, having cross the corners.
You, you'll have to lease it off to whoever?
Yeah.
Oh, that's, okay.
Just like the buildings we have, like indoor.
Sure, uh, how do you arrive at the twelve sixty five?
That was fun.
Okay.
The name was, sometime ago, so, it was based off of the average, sale price, uh. Well, actually, it's based off the last, uh, purchase from, from the United States. And that's, I, it started with an average, and then went forward after six and four ways to get mono, uh. Still, I don't think you drive, there's a previous car break that I filled out, this, this is a little bit hard. So, in the same place, we paid a lot, um, for it.
And you, as you were coming out from the, yeah. Thank you. Uh, there's been certain, uh, recent questions on, we have a lot of stuff on that lot. Like crushed concrete, and crushed white cup, and brown.
Yeah, I thought you said that, our plans are probably gonna be a year out, we gotta finish brownstone, um, properties bought, and then we got our own personal house finished before we get into the, start building. Someone wants to fill it up with filler. But I totally hear any city could use it for a year, we can reach the main, inside, fill it in, or in the, or fill it with cheaper.
We, on this plan that we have, I'm not trying to discuss, but we have those numbers, but, uh, we should have, this should be surveyed so that we would know that the north line would be still south of the bridge, cause if you come in an angle, we come over the bridge, over to our well site, going toward the highway, we would want to make sure that, that the north lot line of these two locks were, uh, south of the bridge, and because it was north of the bridge, it's really gonna make it short for us to get the gravel and the blackout and stuff, so. We want to do that so that we're protected, and able to keep some of these by gravel tar and shit and concrete. I don't know, that, that, tell them to the council instead of you asking the question. I've got a lot of questions, so, with the survey, technically, a seller pays for survey. Uh, depending on the price, Steve, please correct me, if we, you need to determine where the survey is before we commit to selling that, so that we're not cut short of how, what would be a good way to proceed or?
Accept the offer contingent answer.
Was that?
You can accept the offer if you want to contingent answer.
So we just, so, so then they need to ask, check, a couple of questions from the council for twelve months. You're talking, you may need like twenty four months, but that probably won't fly with the marketing and the clinic. What do you think that most time you get, for us to get the stuff off, we needed to start filling it tomorrow, but I mean, the stars, the, uh, to get all of this stuff off?
Yeah, I'm not sure, I haven't, well, I haven't looked at it personally, but is it, is the, are the problem both lots or?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yep.
This is, you can tell them a lot in a year?
Um, I should be able to, I mean, it all depends on.
Part of your whole lot.
Yep, yep. Um, we're, I mean, we have a lot of material out there, uh, if you go, but I've been buying there, it's quite a pile. Um, it all depends on how much manpower and how much time we have, but as soon as we get started on it, it wouldn't take us long, I guess.
But we could easily burn up five, ten thousand dollars just from trucks going to the house, we want to utilize where it is to minimize the cost of, doesn't solve anything.
And we keep hauling more crushed material in there right now, so, the sooner I know, then I can start, starting my own material site, so I don't have to haul so much, so.
Well, I think they haven't covered it, but I would think in the first year, now, if you're pushing the front of the wall, the same kind of going, and, uh, right, so, I mean, you could clear.
Self finishers.
So, it'd be, it'd be, you know, I just, um, you know, we're working a real ways to take the fill off of the, um.
Wait, 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 yep.
Just right there, um. So I'm not going to put, put fill on it, it's not like, she's not going to develop, we're not going to develop all those lots in the next few years.
For sure, I could be able to get that salt pile moved, so then you can just keep working towards.
Model, same for billings and that.
Right.
Yep.
Yep.
Jay, where are we going to put all this stuff when we move in?
So where, our roll five is at, um, if you turn, um, it's right on Fifteenth Street, there's a well there, where people get watered, so it'll be on the east side of that.
North, north of the river, on the same side of the street.
Just, just down the street.
Yes.
It's just going to work fast.
Yes.
Hundred feet, huh?
Yes.
Or two hundred, we don't deserve, we want you to know where, so whether it's human or machine, we can, we just need to make sure we got, have the time and ability to get the stuff off for you.
Right, and there's a rig that puts it in, it's like ten thousand dollars to be located, miles.
And you, and you need to get the fill up to be crossed, because you're going to flood, you need to buy insurance, you know, but. The things just for your purpose.
Yeah.
Yeah, um, I mean, I would, even if it says, you need to turn over a four million, but how many? That next to state, three?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, there's no, there's gotta be a little rush, a little lot of celebrating.
Correct.
Is that part of it?
Well, the other ones.
So, do you have any question?
How can I, to crush the, you know?
We have, we have some money stuck into them, I already told them we had some bill that they could just have that I would have to move.
Yeah.
Um, cause we had to do a bunch of other stuff before, before we crushed, because that's where we had stockpiled, um, for, for the pond project. They had stockpiled that, and for the western project, that's where they stockpiled it and crushed it, and we ended up with some of the pile, so. Um, we don't have to move all of it, there's some clay and stuff that they can have, um, but the other stuff, we have some money into for crushing, so, I'm going to keep that.
So counsel, this, uh, right, I was just gonna say, uh, you want to do, uh, all the offer, pursuing the funding results, and so. Second, motion by the raising, I want Josh to accept the offer, so we can serve it. Steve, the question being that, uh, is, is Clint Martin going to get to fill him right away? Can we allow that, for the survey is done, if it's their own risk to haul it during, or what?
Their own risk, that's fine.
Clint Martin, are you okay with that? I mean, we'll get it done as quick as we can.
Just make sure that's in the notes.
I mean, if you imagine saying, we need to work like a, for the off, for the grid, and, so, break our deals, that's what's up right now.
Yep, yep.
You agree with that, Ken?
Yeah, I mean, the biggest problem I have on this game off is, how soon do I have to get this moved?
Yep.
Busy season, and how soon do I have to move, and there's quite a few problems to this.
Yeah, so if we got twelve months to go, we're going to do it, we'll have to talk to Martin and the friends to see.
I'll, I'll make sure that they get the salt one done, so that they do start building, they'll, they'll start building.
Yeah, and then you can take years, but like, that's, I mean, it's something change, we'll call you, but I don't want you to waste money just in the pile.
Yep.
When you can use it, when I move one, yep.
Okay, you guys okay with that? Okay, any other discussion, if you want to ask? Okay, if not, on favor, sing if I was to say aye.
Aye.
Polls, very unanimous, so if you guys can be in contact with Chad, and we're trying to survey as quick as you can, and review it, so we can be able to make sure the lot line is soft with the bridge and move from there.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. One hundred and twelve, the consideration for resolution for joint powers of major state and municipal, your, for all that, right?
Uh, so it's something that we have with, today, and expired at February twenty twenty, we just need to renew it to continue to access to the ECA data systems, we'll, we use on basis.
This is, this is a state, state, that, for super, just sort of your, state, that, for super.
Oh, sorry.
Say my job, any further discussion? Mr. President, what's the question? Most essential period, on favor, seeing if I have a shore of hands, poll, resolution passes, five, zero, three, counts. Uh, probably, sort of, for purchase of fleet's car, get, uh, holding here, uh, weather for show, but, or, we're going to keep watch, dark, giving to, uh, celebrate energy, we get two thousand five hundred dollars, a camera's forty, forty eight fifty, or something, two hundred five hundred dollars.
What's the?
Forty eight, forty five.
Just all the, the, uh, camera system and the old vehicle, that, 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 or?
It, what, this is just going to get us, we're going to, we're going to. But it's a big car, it's not a hobby, cameras in the car.
I understand that, but what are they going to do for the month ahead right now?
I'm thinking, yeah.
And?
So our output is twenty three hundred and forty five dollars, take out the twenty five dollars of the grant, which I'm going to.
Three seventy, I think we all, seven, seven, um.
If it's true, we guys actually do. So, Jake Paul, sir, um, any further discussion? All, you can add it, there's, that's some of the letters in the place, okay?
Yeah.
All, any further discussion? Not all, on favor, sing if I was to say aye.
Aye.
Polls, very unanimous. PJ? Good process with bucket truck. PJ?
Hi, I have someone I just kind of want to tell them. Uh, here, your next request, going on the best, do your place, or, so, first lift bucket truck. Um, this would be, we would take delivery number two, we'd be paying like two thousand and twenty one, or look at sixteen, eighteen monthly pack on the truck. So, we kind of get the process started, we would have our pricing when we expect the truck, and that would be the price.
So, it's, it's.
Yeah, Altech does state here, I believe, versus lift does too, um, they do the chassis and the, the boom stuff, or, kind of different separate line items, I guess, um. I'm not very familiar with how they do their state bid, but Altech gives them most of the state that I know of, and that, um. It's, it's weird, because we do have the two different pieces coming together that day, and I'm not a hundred percent sure that the last one we bought was just a, a stock truck, just because of the attacks, we kind of ran into this issue where we didn't plan in advance to replace a whole truck, and we, we were doing, we needed a truck. So, we just wanted to build ready for, uh, for animal fleet, basically, last time.
On the truck, the trucker replaces, thirty seven foot truck, what are we going to get replacement?
It'll probably be a fifty five.
Okay.
Yep.
So that would be more versatile for, for our needs, maybe?
Well, to put it in perspective, every pole we have in common for, on our distribution, just for the forty five foot pole, very six and a half, seven feet deep. You can do the math back, or you can match that, we, we back the little truck, the bumper is above a foot away from that pole to pre-check the doctor, so it's matched out, we do.
Almost six to issues?
It, it, it is, I mean, it's, it's not the most stable at that point, it, it's a beautiful street light truck, if you were doing street lights on it every day, it's quite alright for that, but we're doing what we have kind of switched to doing now, to the underground, just been installed and taking care of it overhead system, it's not very practical anymore. So, if a, a bigger truck is required.
A lot of money in our, our reserves, on the, uh, cap. Cap.
I'm, combination, I'm working on right now twenty-one budget, and, oh, I should know tomorrow, I guess, whether I can swing the whole thing out of that budget, or if we do have to throw a ballpark over to the tree. We take the rest of the reserves, or, and I don't know where, got the equipment, there's the last one, we didn't take anything out of there, since that's been, sort of... One way or another, it'll be covered, uh, reserves or a combination of everything, reserves budget.
It's three sixty, three sixty-eight, showing on how much we have. Three sixty-eight, three thirty-one, so. This is April. We keep, keep us ordered to do that here.
I'm dead.
Out of the way, for substantial, just for the, you know, council wishes. So, uh, Ray, so, Josh, what's the new one on my, what, one hundred and thirty-seven?
Yep, the new one would probably, I'm assuming it'll be a fifty-five, I can't...
Fifty-five, okay, that's a fifty-five.
Yeah, that varies, based on manufacturer. One will say it's fifty-five, one might say it's fifty-three, so, in that ballpark.
It's just safer than one percent.
I will be back when I get, get back stuff, so, get prices.
Great, thanks. All in favor, sing if I have to say aye.
Aye.
Four, period, unanimous. Paul, gee, animals, have a pain, for the change of shirt. So, um, not in the second, Paul, any further discussion? Not all in favor, sing, not all in favor, sing if I have to say aye.
Aye.
Both, period, unanimous. Well, they, Miller's license, or a lot, Amanda looks like a horse.
Uh, I believe that, she's doing a book store and everything.
Selling books?
Yes.
Selling books, okay. Also, where she? Does she need to go herself before we do?
I have it on.
You have it all, okay, great. He's the one month time, so?
Yes.
So, Josh? Check. Thank you, Paul, any further discussion? All in favor, sing if I have to say aye.
Aye.
Both, very unanimous, thank you. Tom?
Uh, a couple things.
Yep.
They don't know anything about flowers, grass, dang lines, weeds, or anything, but we drive by our multi-culture park over there. They don't get the weed expert in there.
Yep.
Chad, those white flower, white weeds, wherever they are, in our multi-culture park, is that something that's going to die off? It needs to be sprayed? Okay, that's what I was gonna say. We should look at, if we had, what about building a budget, we should do it. Looks kind of, it's, it's hard to spray it too with all the flowers that are in there too. So, it's gonna have to be a lot of... Is that something we can do, or we have to hire somebody to do it?
I think we might be able to do it, um, I'm just still worried about all the, the plants in there.
Okay. Goodness.
Yep.
Uh, speaking of the campground on the other side of Lake, where's that stand right now?
The stand is, uh, not giving any, it's not, no, just, it's not progressing, it's literally years ago.
Okay, do we have any liability exposure on any of this, and other there? Steve, Steve? I got the, 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 the whole, the new campground on the other side of Lake, that empty parcel land there, there's the clothes trailer sitting there, or the boat trailer sitting there. I don't know who they are, but do we have any liability on that equipment?
We just have liability to the child trespasser for a defect going to us and not disclosed or intended. So, if there's a hidden hole, an eight-year-old walks in there, breaks his ankle, we've got some insurance to cover. Is it you or me?
Yeah.
We're difficult.
I just have to go through there, it'd be interesting.
You know which trailer that is, maybe?
It's that all that was, uh, in the county mental health. It's his, he thinks that he owns some back in there. We had sent him a letter before, but I think we need to send him another one, because it keeps from the far...
It's from the fence, because it's supposed to stop at the fence, we went to it, we did it.
Yep, we went to it a couple times.
He's at the fence, the west, it's, it's, okay. If you can follow up on that, Amanda, so if you know what we're talking about, then the county mental health, no. So, if you can get the letter out, or message, come from Steve, shut up.
I'll talk to her.
Whatever else, whoever should get it out, should do it. Okay, one more.
Okay, one last thing. Then, kind of a sore thumb to me for a long time, that I've asked different questions on. In our department, six seventeen, which is the theater, here, right now, it says a, a minus of twenty-three thousand dollars. Wouldn't that department be better labeled, community building? I mean, if, if somebody is not acquainted with this, what, what we have here, and they got a copy of this, they looked at the theater, twenty-three thousand dollars in the red. They think, well, why do we have a theater? It's not the theaters causing that deficit. Wouldn't it be better to have that, that department called the, the community building? Well, then you look at that. That could be repairs in here, could be repairs blew up, could be remodels, like, remodeling, I mean, the, the twenty-three thousand wouldn't have to do if that's kitchen equipment, I don't know.
Had to, had to remodel it.
The, well, it was, the last time I asked about it was, we want equipment in there, that's the community building.
We have two, the, this building is set up into two separate funds within the city. In the general fund, there is a community building section. And anything dealing with lower level, up to the lobby, theater, is all assigned to the theater. Or, excuse me, to the, to that general fund. Everything from the lobby going up belongs to the theater. So, we ended up with January, February, March. In the middle of March, we were hoping it has a theater. So, we lost that kind of money.
We have only one utility meter, right?
Yep.
Now, I had a question, and it's expensive here not too long ago, and I was told it was because we bought new equipment there, and that was in the theater. That's, that's what, that's what the answer was. It's just to me, you had, okay, so what's the twenty-three thousand dollars we spent at the theater?
We'll look that up and we'll do a report to the council, write emails within the next couple days. It could go right down to support that.
It, it just doesn't drive out with the past, you know, we've done three thousand, four thousand dollars we had to supplement from the liquor fund. Because it has been doing a hell of a job with the theater, but we can't be twenty-three thousand, we're just gonna be somewhere. And if it's something that could be, and has related to this building here.
Then it could have been assigned to the wrong...
Oh, that's what I'm saying, let's rename and reshuffle and just have apartment six seventeen, need a community building, encompassing everything, I mean, that's all I got.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, who can add, what are your wish, your agreement? Uh, tomorrow, they create COVID testing events, uh, which is July eighth, from the seventh, uh, in Texas. And the registration link, which they're asking people to re-register for, based on the safe space of faith and all on the website.
And the same way as the Spanish code.
Uh, and then I do want to just give a theater update a little quick, as I think some theaters are trying to open and we're remaining closed. And we will remain closed during this, weekends first. The two buildings are connected to the shared space with shared air. Uh, and we operate the senior dining operation, the meal on wheels, out of the TV building. So, if anybody were to bring COVID into the theater, we would have to shut down the entire facility for fourteen days, which then we wouldn't be operating the meal on wheels. And from my understanding, there's been a lot of locations, and we are one of those locations in town, so we definitely don't want to try to, uh, have that shut down for fourteen days. Uh, another, uh, reason is that we're actually, because our population, we're making our time gaining access to movies. Uh, hopefully that'll change here the next few months. So, there's just cost, uh, looking at Cassius Street, we would be all pretty individuals portraying, just for even, and it's got some of the laws regarding that they had over the last three months. And then lastly, it's just logistics, we're still exploring, trying to conduct, uh, theater sanitizing after people would have viewed a movie, uh, operations between, uh, snap, cash, and ticket handling, and what that looks like. And, um, looking at how we can set up a counter, and all those needs happen with resources, but it's always better. So, I just kind of wanted, I've got a question, because I just kind of wanted to, to get the update from the council on that, and follow up.
Uh, letter of Jack from, uh, Josh, your, may I, your counsel? I'm going to resign my seat on counsel, my son might also be seven thirty-first, twenty twenty, whichever comes first, thank you, Josh Hazeman. So, that would mean that his seat would be up for election at our general election. So, my question to Steve is, if Josh, if we accept his letter of resignation, uh, is it December thirty-first, are we able to advertise and have his, uh, seat filled or voted on at the general election, so that we don't have to have a special election, it's introduced by thousand dollars?
Yes, certainly.
Okay, that is, okay. What I need are, so we, we need to advertise something in the paper, because the regular seats are open in July eighteen, December? Do we need to add that on it?
Yes, yes, we need to.
Okay.
Somehow, I'll, I'll, it's gonna, okay, encourage Steve on it.
So, we have all in a general election.
Right.
Okay, that's my question, so.
So, I've asked the council to, uh, vote on accepting Josh's letter of resignation effective December thirty-first, twenty twenty. Or if it moves sooner than that, might be effective no later than December twenty twenty. Okay. So, what?
Second.
Uh, I'm wishing by a grace and by Paul to accept the judge's resignation as it be December thirty-first. Any further discussion?
We're going to have that for the, uh, twenty-two. Okay, so, we have a two-year, it'll be two years, twenty-two years.
Any discussion? For, before we go, I'd like to thank you, Josh, and your, uh, myself, and the community, the council members, the staff, everybody. Your diligence service, you've given so graciously to our community, I know, so, you know, that we will be always grateful for that, you done a great job, and you did proud, and your family did proud of what you've served our community for. Thank you. Well, uh, all in favor, sing if I have to say aye.
Aye.
Both, period, unanimous. Uh, let me see, just reminder, COVID testing, please get the information out, it's free testing, drive through your car, grow a mask. Whether you have symptoms or not, you can go there, it's free, uh, charge, free to cost. Last week in the area, there was six hundred and nothing tests, so we'll see how many happens tomorrow. Chris? Paul? I mean, right, no. Steve?
Yeah.
Joe?
Just remember, on Thursday, Memorial Drive will be closed for the, uh, second harvest food giveaway. They do need volunteers at eleven o'clock in the morning to repackage produce, and volunteers from three thirty to seven, help distribute the produce. If you're willing to help, just show up that day, and we'll put you to work. Now, the street will be one-way, but this school, the street will be one-way, north to south. Some would say east to west.
Okay, Joe. So, we need to get some black eight out there or something?
Yeah, I'll be working with Chad on that.
Okay, very good, okay. Linda Lou?
Uh, Sir Tom, I am gonna be having a popcorn fundraiser on Friday, July tenth. From five thirty-seven, here at Princess Marnie's Race, we'll be to refresh swings at Memorial Park. Lots of the federal donations from me bag of popcorn, and please consider supporting his worthy cause.
Lou, thanks, Linda. Do you have that on our city website or your license, Joe?
Yeah, I got it, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, very good. Uh, Mark?
Nope.
Chad, do you have anything, anybody else there have anything to bring up?
All good.
Oh, good, all right. Nobody has anything else, I have a motion to adjourn, so, Josh? Paul, all in favor of that?
Aye.
Thank you for attending, have a great night.
Thanks again, Josh.